Yes, sir. It's customary if staff get a raise that the board should also get the same raise. And it is a very minimal amount. I recommend that Dr. Shepherd recommends that we do this. It's just procedural that we need to get a vote from you.
Okay, board members. You see, it's got a $600 impact, annual impact for the board to get these 1.2% increase. Do we have any discussion on this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to call your attention too, because I think I brought this up in prior years. Back when Jeff Barnhart was still county commissioner, it was in his last year, so it might have been around 99 or so, the county commissioners voted that this board and Conaples' board would, going forward, get any raises given to the county. And so, the 1.2 trickle down to all locally paid, trickle down to our employees as well. So, I don't know why we vote on this when that vote is in the record, that whatever percentage... Because it... We don't earn this money, or we don't tax for this money. The commissioners do. And so, it was their say. And that was when we went from like $200 a month to 500 because there was such a vast discrepancy. We still only have about half of the compensation that the commissioners do, and that's fine. I'm not doing this for the money. But that's why they did it that way. So, that's why I am always perplexed by when this comes up, because that decision was made now 12 years ago, 13 years ago.
Cindy, I have to... I mean, I know we didn't. We just always voted on it, and it was... Always voted on just like that, like exactly what you said. Whatever was gotten, it was same thing, whatever the employees got.
Right. For example, the commissioners don't vote on an increase. They just get their percentage. Because when they did that vote... Because I can remember Jeff making the motion, because it was in one of our, like, where we joined them for the meeting.
I looked it up, too, and I didn't find anything that required a vote either. And Mark's looking it up now, but I just know that from past...
And it was because the commissioners have already predetermined by their statement.
You guys have always hoped on it.
Yeah. Jeff probably remembers that.
If I could just say, if we could avoid putting this on the board agenda, and if we could make this automatic, that is our desire. That's what we want to do, because it is minimum. But you deserve more than you get for the work that you do. And if our attorney can find a way to remove this from the agenda for next week, I would be more than happy to do that.
With that being said, can we just hold there? Those guys need to change the camera. Are you okay? You done rolled? Okay. Well, that's a good thing, that we can just keep going then. I think I forgot about him, to be honest with you. So, anyway, so what's the pleasure of the board? We just want to let our attorney figure this out and...
Yeah. And Mr. Chair...
If the employees didn't get anything, we didn't get anything.
Right.
They got something, we got something.
And for the record, we did take... We have, and not that I care about $7 a month, but I just want it for historical purposes, because this history is going to be leaving this board. But for historical purposes, we did voluntarily take a pay cut, and we voted on that. But we do not have to vote for the percentage increase based on commissioners precedent.
And we never bought that increase back. It's... We kept that 10% increase.
Yeah. Ms. Blackwater wants to know if we get five bonus days off, Mr. Chairman?
She's fixing to get a whole bunch. She's going to be getting a whole lot, as three other board members, as you know, will be having four open seats real soon. So, you're going to get a vacation for a while. I took two years. But with all those comments and everything, I think that what we need to do is just put it on the consent agenda and just let it ride for that. Is everybody okay with that? I mean, we're not talking about a $600 impact, annual.
Does Mark have an opinion, or does it matter one way or the other?
I don't see anything in the statute, in a very quick look, that says it's something you have to vote on. But I'm happy to look at that, and if you want, you know, I can... We can report back, or you can take it off unless I tell you you have to put it on, however you like it.
Why don't we just take it off unless we have to?
Okay. And I'll let you, you know, I'll let you know if I think it's something you're required to do. Given the history, if there was a vote saying it should change with the... When there's an overall staff change, that would seem like a logical thing that it does automatically. Obviously, if you want to deviate and do more or less, I think you'd vote on that. But given that precedent, and given nothing in the statute that I see you have to vote separately, I'm not sure you do. But I... That's only on a 10-minute, a five-minute look. So, I'll keep looking to make sure there's not some special thing. Sometimes there are requirements for legislative-type bodies where you have to vote, but it sounds like this is a precedent that's set up.
So, what you're saying is go ahead and put it on the consent, and if you find different, we'll take it off on the 13th. Okay. So, that's how we'll do it, okay?
We'll let you know beforehand, so you can... So, the agenda can be...
Okay. That'll be fine. So, the media and all that'll know. All right. Thank you, Ms. Klutz, and I think you can continue with the school resource officers.
Yeah. I'll stay with you one more time. Okay. We have two contracts for our school resource officers, ones with Cabarrus County and ones with the City of Concord. And it's... It can get complicated if you let it. There's a funding provider, and there's a SRO provider. So, the state provides the funding for our high school SROs. And the county gives us the SROs as an in-kind contribution for the middle schools. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they provide the SRO. The city or the county provides the SRO, depending on the location of the school, not necessarily the funding. So, we have two contracts. We pay the county directly for high school SROs, and we pay the county... It's basically a flow-through. The state gives us the money, we send it directly to the county. The city charges us salary and benefits. There was no increase in salary or benefits at the city level, so there was no increase in the contract amount. There was actually no increase in the contract amount for the county either. So, these... The contracts are the same as they were last year. So, I'll take any questions that you have about either contract.
Okay. Board members, you have it. Anybody have any discussions? Okay for the consent agenda? Everybody good with it?
I'm sorry. I was just thinking. Do we need to pay the 1.2% increase?
No, because they're not our employees. The city pays the city SROs, and the county pays the county SROs. And when there's a pay increase for the city officers, then they build that into the contract. Like, last year, they had a pay increase, and we had to pay that, although our employees didn't get a pay increase. This year, the city doesn't get a pay increase, and there's no increase in the contract.
Okay. Because I thought that... I thought all of those positions got increased on that 1.2, because it trickled down...
The city. Can I talk about that? She said they didn't.
See, Mecklenburg... No, that's Mecklenburg County employees. Got it. Okay.
Okay. So, we're good for the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Klutz.
Mr. Schuh?
Yes.
On the last question, I have actually looked. 115 C-38 says compensation for the board is actually set by the county commissioners as the tax-loving authority, so it is not something you need to vote on. So, that can come off the agenda.
Okay. So, we can just take it off the consent agenda?
They've said it, and said it tracks the overall increases, is my understanding. So, you do not need to vote on that.
All right. That's a good find.
And since I've reached that answer here, I'll let everyone know, and Ms. Monroe can take it off the agenda.
Okay. That's a good find. Thank you.
And it's note, Mr. Chairman, when the county has given pay increases in the past, we've never taken them. But that's something that, for future, the board needs to remember. So, we have not taken them because the state did not get them. So, for example, the year before, I think the county gave a 1.5% increase, and we... The board was technically eligible to take it, but we did not. So, we only take it when our employees take it.
Yeah. Well, we took the 15% reduction a number of years ago, and that's still... So, we've still got a long ways to go to catch up on that. But it's like Ms. Furtinbaugh said, you know, when I ran for school board, I didn't even know I got any type of compensation. I remember Mr. Jordan came to me and said, "Here's your check." I said, "For what?" He said, "For being a school board member." I didn't even know I got anything. But it does help. Every little bit helps for fuel and that kind of thing, because we do do a lot more than just attend two meetings a month, which is what the public thinks. But that's not it, by a long shot. But anyway, with that being said, so that will come off the consent agenda, and it will come off the agenda altogether. And then, we have for the school resource officers, these two contracts with the city and the county. That will be on the consent agenda for next week, 13th. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Klutz, for bringing those things to us. Now, I'd like to ask Ms. Minnet if she would approach the podium, and she's going to talk to us about a restoration project of the historic Concord High School auditorium. Thank you, Ms. Minnet.
Could you give me a minute to change hats? And I kind of like this side better than that side. I'm coming as the chair of the Cabarrus County Education Foundation. The board, the foundation board, has its offices and meets at the old Concord High School, and that's something that we're very appreciative of, of having that space. And so, we see that building quite often, and like many others in the community, we wonder what's going to happen to it and what the future is there. The building, as you know, is owned by the Cabarrus County Schools, and it has seen many uses over the years, and it still has minimal uses, classroom space, and nonprofit offices, and storage, and so forth. At different times, there have been public comments about the future of the building, and currently, it has many problems that allow only limited use. The neighborhood immediately around the school has seen better days, and along with the inevitable question of financing such a project, the outlook has not been very positive. Recently, however, the foundation board has had discussions with Dr. Shepherd, Lynn Wickie, and others, who, thinking outside of the box, have speculated about several reasonable and viable uses for this historical gem. Dr. Shepherd has a very innovative concept that would utilize the refurbished space to house entire schools as their home buildings are being renovated. An example might be Wolf Meadow or Royal Oaks. This would prevent students from being farmed out to space-available situations. It would simplify the transportation issues for those schools and make it possible for work to be performed at the home school without some of the calendar restraints that we meet at other times. Once the use of this building for temporary school housing has ended, it could become, as an example, an arts magnet, drawing students from throughout the county with an emphasis on music and art. And here again, Dr. Shepherd has innovative ideas for what that program might be. Restoration of the auditorium space would be an asset, not only for the school, but for the community as well, in much the same way that A.L. Brown Auditorium has seen new life. So, the first step was to determine if the building is structurally suitable for restoration. A DPI engineer came from Raleigh to analyze the situation, and I'm going to let Lynn Wickie tell you about his findings and also about federal funds that may be available to move this project forward. Lynn?
Thank you, Ms. Minnet. We had a... And this goes back about a year and a half or so ago. We had a DPI, an engineer from DPI, come out and take a look at the building with us. We pretty much toured everything, looked at most of the systems that serve the building, as well as the general structure as a whole, including, you know, some of the remarks he made was, "It's a building with great bones," as he said, "a building that has the capacity for renovation." He noted, for example, as you walked around the building, and we took an extensive tour of the exterior as well, there's literally only one single crack in the entire structure of the masonry itself, which is remarkable for the age of the building, which suggests, one, it's a very stable site, a stable building. But then, on top of that, you know, because of the nature of its history, great floor-to-floor heights, easily remodeled to other uses or to continue as a school, and to install new systems within the height of the building, we at least have that much to work with, which is great. You know, a lot of the more modern buildings, you take the buildings built in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, you don't have that opportunity. So, in looking at all that and taking into account what he suggested, and I will say, as you can imagine with the age of the structure, all those systems basically have to be replaced. We don't have enough electrical to do much of anything these days in that building, and we'd have to provide new heating, ventilation systems, and all of that, plumbing as well. And there is asbestos and lead-based paint, as you might well imagine. So, those are things that we'd have to address. His basic estimate for the work of just general remodeling, including the systems, was between $5 and $6 million. We also added to that, and this was something that Mr. Kirk did while he was principal there, was looked at the accessibility, mainly for the auditorium portion of it, but really accessibility for the whole building at that location. And we added another $1.5 to $2 million for that work. So, we'd have a budget of somewhere in the range of $6.5 to $8 million for the construction of the building, and the design fees, contingency, and furnishings would add another $1.5 to $2 million. So, in the range of $8 million to $10 million would give you truly a renovated facility in the addition of having a wonderful auditorium for both school as well as community use. And that kind of leads me to where we go with funding as opportunities. I think there certainly is an interest in the community in general about seeing the old building come back to life, for many reasons. But in addition, there are still what we call QZAB, and I'm sure Dr. Shepherd remembers what that acronym relates to. It is a sister funding, a federal stimulus funding package to the QSCB, but the difference is that it can only be used for renovation of existing buildings. It does not involve construction of any new work. And it can... And it requires a 10% match as a portion of the project. And that can be for services in kind, a whole wide variety of things. And so, I think that's something... And I checked fairly recently with folks at DPI, and they have lots of those dollars available. They're looking desperately for projects, because... And I don't know that there's a definite end date, but I know with QSCB, ideally, when it started, they were looking at an end or completion of sometime during the year of 2014. So, I'm not certain if QZAB faces that same deadline or not. But I think time is beginning to grow a little short. And so, I think that the time is now, and I would agree with Ms. Minnet, that if we're going to move forward, it is... And look at that as one of the options for funding, that we need to make some decisions as soon as possible.
Thank you, Lynn. Well, with that information in hand, and I think it's exciting information to hear that, as he said, it takes a match, and the match again is 10%?
Yes, ma'am.
The foundation board has said that they would be willing to serve with the Board of Education and any other entity that would be involved as a coordinating body to try to establish a game plan and formulate the fundraising efforts that would be necessary for this. I think the first step, since this is a public meeting and people will hear about this, and I think the very first step is to have contact with the Board of Commissioners so that they understand that we're not coming up with some sudden, extreme request for funding, but rather, we would like to continue on to the second and third step, which would be to also approach the City of Concord, because this is within their limits and would be a valuable asset to the City of Concord, see if they will participate in the project. And then, the third step would be to form a coalition of representatives from the governing bodies, the historic Cabarrus, the residents of historic Concord, the alumni of Concord High School, which I think would be a tremendous resource, and anyone who is interested in historic preservation in our county. That coalition would be tasked with mapping the project's fiscal needs, the resources that would be tapped, the grants that would be sought, and a calendar of milestones to be reached. If such a public-private coalition is successful, a major advantage for all the taxpayers of the county is the potential to make seats available for students at a much lower cost per seat than current new construction. So, yes, the county would be asked to produce some funds, but at a much less per-student cost. I've searched the web and looked at projects of renovations of old high schools, and I haven't finished flipping the pages yet. There are so many of them. There are both successful efforts and unsuccessful efforts. And I think by studying those, particularly the folks on this coalition, we can see the things that have worked, the things that have not worked, and have a positive outcome here in Cabarrus County. But at the end of the day, we will have accomplished several things for not only the Cabarrus County Schools, but for the community as a whole. We will have provided quality space for education at a reduced per-pupil cost. We will have prepared a head for the least disruptive housing of students renovation at existing schools. We will have preserved an architecturally and historically significant piece of Cabarrus County, and we will have helped to rejuvenate a struggling part of the City of Concord. We will have generated an intangible pride in working together toward a goal that lives well beyond today and contributes to the community and pride for everyone. And with that, I'd like to ask Dr. Shepherd to add his comments and additional information that Lynn and I may not have touched on.
I told Ms. Minnet earlier that I would fill in any gap. So, let me just say, it was a wonderful presentation, and there are no gaps. I think you've explained it beautifully. We have a need for swing space. I'll give Lynn the credit for that idea. It's not mine. He's the one that introduced the idea that we need a place to move children while we're building and renovating other sites. And so, I think that's a wonderful use. We also have the tremendous need for the magnet of art school that you've mentioned that we've talked about now for too long. There's $37 million available by the state right now for QZAB funding. Unfortunately, that... The date for using those funds, we were informed at our last superintendent's meeting, is December of this year. So, we've missed this opportunity. We don't want to miss the next one, and we need to find out... It's time to find out if there is support within this community to do at least a 10% match on this, if not more. And I have enough people mentioning it to me where I feel certain that we'll be able to reach the 10%, but perhaps even more. So, I not only support this, I'm very excited about this and like to see this move forward as quickly as possible.
Then, I would assume that you're asking the foundation to form this coalition group to start studying this along with the school system?
Well, I don't think we're to the point where we want to collect funds, but I think we need to find out if there are those that are willing to make contributions to this cause and then report back to this board. And as you said, get the commissioners informed as to what our intentions are.
Thank you, Ms. Minnet, and thank you, Mr. Wickie, for your report there. And board members, there you have it. You know, I've been on the board for 10 years, and it's always been a topic of discussion is the old Concord Auditorium and that kind of thing, what we're going to be able to do with it. And I think that you've got a good general idea of how to put it together and how to make it work. And based on that, I want to make sure that the recommendation that is being asked from the board is that the proposed restoration of the historic Concord High School be approved as presented. But I want, obviously, it to go to the consent agenda, and like Dr. Shepherd said, we've got to move on it quick. So, with that being said, do I have any comments or concerns from the board? Let's start with Mr. Furtside.
Ms. Furtinbaugh? Yeah. I guess one, I have a question about for the QZAB funding. Does anybody know, can the liability, responsibility as far as paying it back be split between two government entities, like between the City of Concord and the county, if that was the interest? I'm just wondering.
I don't know the answer to that, but that's one of the things we need to find out.
It might be worth finding out, because I would think the commissioners might have an interest in some split of the liability long-term because of where the school's sitting. But the second question or statement, Mr. Chairman, is I don't think we can do a motion to approve the proposed restoration. I think we have to... The most we can do is approve further investigation of the project. We don't have any funding to approve a restoration. So, I think we just need to have that worded, that we approve the investigation of the coalition, or whatever you want to call it, moving forward.
Mr. Onrick, can you address that?
I mean, I don't... You obviously don't have a funding source, but I think I heard Grace say is she's looking for a sense of support for moving forward with a coalition. So, I think that's what you're really looking for as a resolution. It's not a commitment of financial money at this point, but an expression of interest and support of the work of the foundation in creating this coalition. So, I think you can do that. I agree. It's not a budget-type... You're not committing any funds at this juncture, and probably can't really do that at this point.
Yeah. So, I think that the item on the consent agenda should read something of the nature that the board supports the proposal, or the concept is a good word. The board supports the concept for the education, Cabarrus Education Foundation, to move forward with the investigation of the restoration of the historic Concord High School, something like that.
Would that include... Would that include asking community members that they would be willing to make financial contributions to this?
I think it can, just like we've had a number of schools come forward with their wrestling rooms and their field houses and whatnot. In the same vein, we support you pursuing this activity. We're not giving any direct money right now, because we have no money to give, but we support the activity.
Absolutely. And as you could tell, I had a problem with the motion there on it, the way it was. That's why I read it to you, so bring it to all of your attention, because, like you said, we don't have the money. But we're anticipating through this concept to be able to apply for the money that is available, if we can get it. But then, it's got a lot more than just that. You've got to have the buy-in from the commissioners and potentially the city council and the public in general. So, it's a lot, you know, that's going to have to sort of be a little bit more cohesive there to make it work. But Ms. Blackwater, do you have comments or concerns? Okay. Mr. Keiger?
No. I think...
Ms. Carpenter?
I just have one question. And this is... It goes backwards, and things could have changed. Now, it was my understanding, I didn't think elementary schools could be put into two levels. I thought that had... Oh, it can be.
Patriot is two levels.
Oh, it can be. So, that... There was somewhere, I thought that you couldn't have them into two stories.
If it's a third, it can only be, what is it, grades four and five on the third floor, something like that? But it's a tiering of... Because you figure, oh, even like Wyncroft was three stories, the old Wyncroft. We just had fourth and fifth grade on the top floor.
Okay. So, we're okay with that? Okay. So, we're okay?
Yeah, we're okay.
I don't know where it was that, you know, we started going to one level.
Yeah, we're good with that. And Ms. Minnet, do you have any... You have any final comments, Ms. Minnet?
No. Just to say that I appreciate the board being willing to get something started, and we're going to have to put our running shoes on if December is the goal.
Absolutely. And we're going to move on it, too. So, do we have a consensus of the board with the motion corrected, as Ms. Furtinbaugh had mentioned?
Yeah. I think as long as we have the word investigation, or exploration, or something like that, I think that's... So, I think we're good.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Okay. Mark, you can get with Eileen for the motion, for the consent agenda on the 13th. Okay? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Board members, we're going to move along now to 4.5. It's the policy revisions for approval on the second reading. Dr. Colleen Sains at the podium, and she's ready.
I am. We have three policies for you to review on second read tonight. One, technology acceptable use, in which there were some revisions made per board request, distribution of literature, and lastly, the standards of professional conduct. Are there any questions on any one of these that you would like to ask?
Board members, do you have any questions? Now, this is the second reading. Ms. Furtinbaugh, I think you may have a question or two.
Yeah. Well, not about the changes in the policy, but I just wondered if there was any thought given to just how we sign our ethics and our professional behavior statement every year? If there's any thought given to having something like this signed by employees, in particular because things such as the nature of when we got down to like T., employees shall be fully engaged in job responsibilities during work hours, things like that.
Actually, we had discussed it. We... I don't think we had come to a final decision on whether or not we were going to start asking them to sign it, but we did discuss it.
I mean, on one hand, I see where some people may take it as an insult, but honestly, most big companies, even our little board, do that now on an annual basis. You revere, "This is your agreement of employment." You've re-verified, this is your agreement of employment, so.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, everybody okay for the consent agenda? Okay, Colleen, consent agenda for the 13th. All right, we're going to move on to 4.6. We're going to be having Mr. Wickie to the podium for the transfer of the mobile units to the Rowan Community, Cabarrus Community College. Mr. Wickie.
The MOU that you have before you is something that we've prepared with the assistance of Womel Carlisle's staff and Sarah Stone specifically, and Mark as well, I'm sorry. The thing I wanted to point out, we, we didn't have a chance to run this by Rowan Community College folks yet, but I think we wanted to get something in a form that our board was comfortable with first. So, that, that really, I, I would offer this as a draft, pending your review, of course, and approval, and then ultimately, Rowan Cabarrus Community College. The thing, as, as I wanted to point out, I, I've had Dave Burnett from my staff look at this, and he pointed out a couple of things that I think bear discussion. One was the reference to casualty insurance, specifically, and this is under item five. And I'm wondering if it shouldn't, shouldn't be casualty and property insurance. That was something that Dave brought up. Our concern is really more for the wellness of the mobile units, and clearly casualty is important, but, but property is just as important in this case. So, I would, I would suggest we add property insurance as well. Then there was a reference to, in item six, RCC's obligation, obligations, and we talk below that about the various costs involved. And again, Dave's suggestion, and I agree with him, that we might want to add at the very end of the first sentence there, where it says, "and expenses associated with the lease of the units," something to the language of "to include but not limited to the following." Because I'm, I'm pretty sure we got a lot of the cost covered, but I don't know that we got every possible cost covered. So, rather than having something end up back in our, in our area of responsibility, I'd just as soon have everything covered by RCC. And then lastly, just as any good professional would think, he, Dave suggested, and again, I concur with the idea of adding an item nine or adding it anywhere in the body of the document, the fact that RCC will hold Cabarrus County Schools and the board harmless in any cases regarding the use and operation of the two mobile units. That really isn't stated specifically, and I guess I would ask Mark, is that something that's, something that, that language should be included, just to make sure that it's stated at least?
I think it's probably worth explicitly stating that, so it's probably a good idea.
So, with those three changes, it is my recommendation, hopefully Dr. Shepherd's as well, that, that the board consider approval of this document so we can move it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Wickie. What I'd like to recommend on this, since Rowan Community College has not had a chance to review this memorandum of understanding, is that we just put this on the action agenda, had to give Dr. Shepherd time to talk to the people at Rowan Community College and bring any differences or whatever to us, and we'll iron all that out on the 13th. But I, I looked it over myself, and I felt like that it was a very good, very good, and with the changes that Dave made, that's fine, no problem at all. And those changes, they, they're not incorporated in this, what we see here, are they?
Not yet, no.
Okay, so you're going to put those changes in?
Correct.
And then, Dr. Shepherd, you'll run this by the people at the Rowan Community College. Is everybody okay with the action agenda, or do you have questions or concerns?
Okay, you know me, I read everything.
Ms. Furtside, go ahead.
Lynn, the ramps and stairs, are we going to give them a set of our ramps and stairs, since we just leave them laying around normally anyways?
Unfortunately, they never work.
Oh, because it's a new grade?
Elevation changes. That, that's, even when we...
That's fine, that wasn't clear to me if that was included or not.
Right, no, it's not.
Okay, is everybody okay for the action agenda on the 13th? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wickie, that's where we're at, for the action agenda on the 13th. Okay, I think you've got one more here, 4.7, with the QSCB, Concord High School IT Project Bid Awards. Okay, Mr. Wickie.
Thank you. Yes, we, we did receive bids for this project, and I was just looking for the bid tab that I, yeah, we have, are these tied together? No, they're individual, okay. So, basically, what we do is we take a bid for the actual installation of the cabling work, which is quote-unquote "construction," and we'll have a construction contract. In that case, just make sure I get the right, both bids combined were actually roughly $10,466 below the estimated project cost, and we recommend going forward with CSI in the amount of a contract for $13,004.25 for the structured cabling. And then we also recommend that the board award the Carolina Advanced Digital a purchase order in the amount of $18,529.38 for the hardware or equipment to be supplied as part of this project.
Okay, board members, you have any question about the bid, Package 1, or bid Package 2? Okay, no comments? Ms. Furtside, no comments, so?
I was trying to...
Okay, all right, with that being said, we'll put it on the consent agenda for the 13th.
I really do have a question.
Oh, 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 my goodness, okay.
Since, since that, on this, on the second one, Concord High School, second wireless project, since it is only $40 difference, does that come into the play for Michael Stock there, where one company or better is deemed better quality based on experience?
To me, I think it would, yes. And Carolina Advanced Digital is, we've been dealing with them for five years.
Mike, step up to the mic, please.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, they're a little bitter anyway, so that's fine. I just didn't know if that other company, because they're within that small margin, if, you know, they're sometimes a better...
Yeah, historically, we have dealt with Carolina Advanced Digital for five years plus with the switches and wireless.
Okay.
Okay, board members, any other discussion, any other questions? Okay, is everybody okay for the consent agenda for bid Package 1, bid Package 2? Okay, consent agenda. Mr. Wickie, you got one more, 4.8, the transfer of the QZAB money?
And that was the project, or the, the movement of funds that Mrs. Klutz mentioned earlier. Within, and this is a result of, of the work that was discovered as we, as we began the demolition of the upper, what we call clear story, of the, the high-level windows in the main corridors of the building, and also in terms of taking some of the, again, it's called storefront, it's actual glass panels and doors that in some cases subdivide corridors, and in other cases, they're the main entrance areas of the building and lobbies. What we found was that inside of the framework of those units, there's actually asbestos-containing materials in the form of a glazing product. And unless, you know, you'd have to have either a really good crystal ball or have done demolition or deconstruction of, of those frames to have even found this material. And so, in order to address that, we did take bids, and the bids actually to, to provide the asbestos enclosure and removal of the material, the demolition of the, of the windows themselves, and then the enclosure and the air monitoring and all, that all came to about $31,000. The reason we're moving the sum of money is we'd liked, because of all the other things that have been happening on these projects, we just want a little bit of contingency in that project should something else come up that we haven't accounted for. So, in, in that way, we'll, we'll be covered and be able to complete the project in a timely manner. So, it's, it is not something that we anticipated. And one of the things I will mention, and I think I might have said this previously, the, the reports that were done, I think in the late 70s, early 80s, the AHERA, as A-H-E-R-A, reports that were done for all schools typically identified asbestos-containing materials that were only visible. Your inspection was to check what the flooring was, what the walls were, what the ceilings were. It did not require anyone to do destructive testing. And so, there's really no way that this would have been discovered unless you tore into it, and so.
You had to actually just get in there, you know, just jump in there and find out. So, in, anyway, if the project does come in at the bid $31,000, $32,000, whatever, then as the board knows, that this money will go back into the pool to help on unfinished projects, or, well, not unfinished, but projects that we didn't get to do. So, all right, is there, anybody have any questions about this movement of money? All right, everybody good for the consent agenda on the 13th? All right, Mr. Wickie, 13th.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, with that being said, that concludes the open session for our board meeting tonight of the work session. It's time for us to go into the closed session, and that will be, let me find my reading right here that I got to do, that will be pursuant to General Statute 143.318.11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or to investigate a complaint, change, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, and pursue it to General Statute 143.318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged. Do I have a motion that we convene in closed session?
Sound move.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that being said, that concludes the meeting. Thank you all for being here, and we'll see you back on the 13th. Good night.